Welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's August 29, 2017 Board Business Meeting. Ms. Doggett, could you please call the roll?
Board Member Jones, Board Member Orgul, Board Member Woods,
Here.
Board Member Love,
Here.
Board Member McCormick, Board Member Avant, Board Member Bibbs,
Present.
Board Member Cornell,
Here.
Chairman Caldwell.
Here.
You have nine members present.
We have a quorum. I would ask that people stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment for a moment of silence. Thank you. And before we do the moment of silence, this is the White Station ROTC. Cadet Ratcliffe was carrying the national flag. Cadet Solis carried the state flag. Cadet Bond and Cadet Koga were the colored guards that protected the flags. That was my mistake. So now a moment of silence. So in keeping with as Shelby County Schools acknowledgment of arts, education is being vital for college career and life readiness. Tonight's spotlight on the arts will present the Shelby County School Art Fest Gallery of Student Work and also highlight a donation of musical instruments. First, we invite you to look around the board auditorium tonight and view a complete set of the Arts Fest People's Choice Award winners made possible by Chief Stockton and Jake Allen. Since 2010, Arts Fest has helped to demonstrate the rounded, the Shelby County Boards of Education's commitment to the important role in educating well-rounded students ready to pursue excellence and create beauty. There are additional prints of these works of art available from the Curriculum and Instruction Department. Tonight, we also highlight a donation of musical equipment from the band Widespread Panic and the Toons for Tots Foundation.
For a band like Widespread Panic and the Toons for Tots Foundation to be able to invest this influx of resources into our school, tens of thousands of dollars per location, it's just something that helps us bridge the gap in access so all students have quality access to music education.
Today was a monumental day for Commศ学8. We're receiving all these instruments.
Music is important to me because it's the way I express myself and how I express my way of doing things and it's a good experience and it makes me smart.
This definitely gives exposure to music and it definitely brings about a new pathway and a new avenue to definitely still connect with our community and bringing the gift of music home to our students.
We know that when kids have high-quality access to music education and arts education, that student engagement goes up, discipline referrals go down. It communicates to students that not only do we care about them learning with their minds, but also them learning with their hearts and souls.
Thank you. Next this evening, next this evening, we want to recognize three of our educators who were selected to participate in the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network's Innovative Leaders Institute. The Innovative Leaders Institute is a year-long training and mentoring experience for educators led by some of the top STEM and innovative school leaders in our state. The Innovative Leaders Institute provides participants opportunities to network with other building-level leaders from across Tennessee, visit innovative schools to examine different models of STEM integration, and share best practices and resources with the expectation of having an immediate impact on leader practice. These outstanding educators are Keisha Ivy of Southwind High School, Andy Dimster, Maxine Smith Academy, Candy Pollan, Maxine Smith, STEM Academy. Pollan, excuse me. So if you're, and I see you are here today, please come forward and take a picture with the board. Thank you. So the question now is on the approval of agenda, and I would like to recognize Board Member Love for the addition of a resolution opposing the Frazier landfill.
I would like to add a resolution. You want me to read it now or wait?
You can read it later, but Board Members, Board Members all have a copy of it at this point.
Yes, each Board Member has a copy in their folder.
Okay, great. And I think, so with there being no further additions to the agenda, we are ready, no, we are ready, we are now ready to vote.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Orgul. Board Member Woods. Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Avant.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell.
Aye.
You have seven aye votes.
The agenda has been approved. So next, we'll move to public comments. And Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at meetings of local Boards of Education. However, board policy provides that not more than 30 minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comment. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization that he or she is representing, if any, and subject of the presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging in the plane. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The Chairmen shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to board rules. The timer on the screen to your right and directly behind the board will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining and when you hear two bells, your time has expired. Actually, you'll have, you have two, each speaker will have two and a half minutes. We have 11 speakers. And with that, we'll start with Jeanette Edmund, Leslie Kane, and Keith Williams.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Edmund, and I'm here as a parent on behalf of my daughter, Nandi Thompson, who is a senior at Central High School, and she also attends VOTAC. The issue is with Kingsbury VOTAC. We have had several incidents that I find appalling. One was she gave the secretary, Ms. Holloman, a copy of her driver's license with my original insurance card as proof of insurance so she could drive. Mr. Bates made a verbal policy letting the students know that no one could drive to VOTAC. At that time-
Excuse me ma'am, the rules we ask is that you not mention people by name.
Oh, okay, sorry. At that time, position, okay. At that time, the secretary asked the principal, what did he want her to do with my daughter's information? He told her he did not care, she could shred it, and that's what she did with my original insurance card. I find that behavior appalling, unprofessional, malicious, and unbecoming of an administrator. And I do not believe this administration would condone such behavior. There is another incident where he told her she could not drive, but other students were allowed to drive. She came home because she felt she was being harassed. What I did was made an unannounced visit. I arrived in the parking lot before Central was to arrive. I noticed there was a young lady from White Station there waiting in her car, waiting for the class to start. I did not see the principal. As soon as my daughter arrived, he aggressively walked out and headed straight to my daughter. During this observation, I got out of my vehicle and I walked up to him, and he said, "Oh, are you with her?" I said, "Yes, I am. Can I help you? Why did you target my daughter?" He said, "Well, she's violating board policy." I said, "What board policy?" "Well, they're not allowed to drive." I said, "Well, would you share that transportation policy with me? Where can I find it?" He said, "I don't have it." I said, "Well, I need to see the policy because I want to make sure that my daughter is in compliance." He said, "Well, I don't have it." I said, "Well, show me something." Then he proceeded to tell me that the board-
Ma'am, appreciate it, but your time's up, and I think the administration or the Board Members will be glad to get an email with the things you're describing.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Kane.
My name is Leslie Kane, 37, 20 Woodland Drive, Memphis, 38111. I'm here to talk about some discrepancies I have. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for serving on the board and for serving our city and our children. I know you take time to do that, so thank you. I love my job, I love my school. With that being said, I personally feel like my license, my certification, my experience, my degrees have become obsolete and second to the opinion of some others who may or may have not ever been in the classroom. I am, I am becoming a script reader, but my degree is not in theater. It is in education, and that is why I was hired, because I'm an expert in my field. I don't understand the compensation, and no one seems to be able to explain it with fidelity when I call. I've sent three emails and I've not gotten an email back. I came in on step eight, I'm still on step eight, and I've been here six years beyond that with a master's degree. Nothing has changed. Secondly, please consider getting rid of the tripod. I'm not afraid of what my students say about me. They're in second grade, they always rate me high. But I truly feel like our money can be spent in the system on something better, like teacher salaries, money with maybe supplies we don't have in the classroom, which brings me to Eureka Math. I'm still short the materials I need, and I would like to know when I can expect a full class set. The new expeditionary learning that's starting in the middle of the year, we are still under contract with Journeys, and this year my student just got a Journeys basal textbook, no workbooks, nothing to go with that. Anything that I get outside of the Journeys textbook, I have to print off on my own. Has anyone considered creating a separate curriculum map for our students that need The time requirements for ELA in math and social studies and science and computer intervention do not give room for adequate state mandated movement breaks or recess breaks or bathroom breaks. Pick a school and plug in the time requirements for an 8:15 to 3:15 school, and you'll see how the times don't add up. Teachers are creating lesson plans all over the district. I'm spending five hours on a weekend creating a lesson plan that you all approved and already gave me, and I'm having to write on a piece of paper the same thing that's on that plan. I feel like our time as teachers can be better spent on the weekends with our family. I don't have enough time, enough planning time, to do all the things I need to do and rewrite the script that y'all have already given me. Lastly, personally, I think there are too many chefs in the kitchen, there are too many jobs and people telling other people what to do. I have a principal at my school, he's an adequate principal, he can tell me how to do my classroom and how to run my classroom, and I feel like y'all can tell him how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Keith Williams.
I am Keith Williams, Executive Director of the Memphis Shelby County Education Association, 126 Flicker. There are some concerns that teachers do have. Amongst those concerns is this masquerade of compensation that has been handed down to teachers. It is not clear to us how this was done. All we do know that it was handed to us. It was not done in a collaborative effort that involved the input of those who are having to figure out how they're going to be compensated. It is all over the place. You have so many ways of compensating teachers now, we're not sure that anybody will be compensated properly. No one is able to figure out what the compensation is, and they cannot be adequately told by those who are doing it. There are all kinds of ways of doing it. The tripod, since the young lady spoke of that, tripod is a survey that is given by students to give their opinions of teachers. It does not give the opinion of this district, it does not give the opinion of principals, it does not give the opinion of the school board, but it does impugn the character and the nature of teachers. Many of the students who do the tripods are very unclear, and we are spending a quarter of a million dollars to get an opinion that is not worth one cent. It makes absolutely no sense to do so. There is also, there are three documents that we hold very dear to this profession. One is the Tennessee Code Antertainer. In that law, collaborative conferencing is outlined. In collaborative conferencing, it does say that there are some things we do have some involvement in, and salary and compensation is one of those things. We have been ignored from that standpoint, and I would urge this board to make sure that you provide oversight to this staff who's running rampant over teachers when it comes to trying to determine what is best for teachers and for children. This board is accountable for what the staff does, and staff is doing as it pleases to do, as far as I'm concerned. We are not involved in these processes, and the law says that we should be. There's also the document in the collaborative conferencing. Collaborative conferencing establishes a time for schools to open, a time for schools to close. These schools are opening and closing at the principals' whams. We must do something about that. Teachers are working 16-hour days, not able to plan, not able to go home on the weekends. It's too much. It's all over the place. Finally, we have a policy in the state board, rules and regulations, that governs planning time for all teachers. I am told that there are schools where teachers have no planning time this year. Some teachers have one day, some have two. The law says 250 uninterrupted minutes of planning time for instruction. I implore you to make sure that you're providing oversight in this district for these things that happen to teachers.
So the next three speakers, Tequila Rucker, Carisha Wilks, and Fran Wilson.
Good evening, Tequila Rucker, 6520 Stage Road. I serve as the President of the United Education Association and affiliate of the Tennessee Education Association, also the National Education Association. I want to first thank you, Superintendent, for meeting with us on last Wednesday in addressing some of our concerns regarding teachers. Some of the things we discussed at last Wednesday's meeting were about compensation, the compensation plan, teacher shortage, overcrowded classrooms, lesson plans, EL, Eureka Math, planning time. Under the law, we should have 2.5 hours, and that's not being met in several of our schools. No air conditioning in several buildings, mold in several buildings, pest in several buildings, RTI, unrealistic schedules, no recess, which is also a state law, and working conditions. We appreciate you allowing us to have a seat at the table. In doing so, we have worked to have an amicable relationship with the district. We have been collaborative, cooperative, and complicit, which to our own detriment has led us to being complacent. Complacent because we trust that you would do, you would take the feedback that we will share with you on behalf of educators and do right by us. In order for us to continue with an amicable relationship, we require transparency, honesty, and say-do index, which means do what you say you gonna do. We look forward to addressing these concerns at our next meeting or during the upcoming town hall meeting that we are working to put together for teachers within the district. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Next, next we have Carisha Wilks.
Kenesha Wilks, 5220 CL Road. I stand before you, a representative of the United Education Association. Proverbs 1625 says, "There is a way that seems right to man, but in the end it leads to death." Eureka Math seems right. Achieve 3,000 seems right. EL seems right. TEM evaluations seem right. Merit-based pay seems right. RTI squared seems right. District surveys seem right. Yet, has the time been taken to listen to the issues these initiatives create? I mean, listen with your heart and not with a budget in mind. If so, maybe your teachers might not be so frustrated, overwhelmed, and exhausted just three weeks into, into the school year. We are aware that panel discussions are conducted, surveys are distributed, committees are formed, and select teachers are invited to participate. We question if those teachers are a true representation of all educators in this district. #AskATeacher. Unrealistic goals and mandates continue to find their way on our clipboards and into our classrooms. One of those mandates is RTI squared. Dear time, dear time, is no longer drop everything and read, but drop everything in RTI. RTI has taken precedence because of compliance walkthroughs and fidelity checks. Teachers are having to reduce whole group instruction, which we call good-first teaching, to fulfill RTI requirements, while other teachers are forced to have RTI time even though all of their students are on or above grade level. #AskATeacher. The District RTI Implementation Guide states, "We are to conduct RTI with 80% integrity and fidelity when some of our students are falling further behind as we wait for data points to be collected before much-needed services are rendered, if ever." How does a self-contained teacher effectively provide intervention for students in reading, comprehension, vocabulary, and fluency, along with math in a 45-minute period? It may have seemed right to increase the number of RTI overseers to enforce full implementation of intervention. There are already numerous accountability measures in place for those that teach, but when will those that support the teachers be held accountable? Is that too much to ask? #AskATeacher.
Next, we have Fran Wilson.
My name is Fran Wilson. I'm at Cape Bond Middle School. I'm a reading interventionist slash community coordinator. My address is 2353 Beecham Place in Cordova. If our district leaders and board members continue to sacrifice our students along with the sanity and well-being of our educators, the district will face a teacher shortage greater than the 20, 250 that were documented this year. #AskATeacher. The teachers in our district are an important asset. We are valuable, we continue to show up and show out for our students with the crumbs that AR, that we are given, sorry, daily, literally and figuratively. Proverbs 163, "Commit to the Lord whatever you do, and your plans will succeed." Let's revisit some decisions, rights and the wrongs. Make the plans that bring success to all students and educators in our district. #AskATeacher. Cape Bond Middle School is a newly constructed building that is seven years old, but has a roach infestation, and the air has been out since the very beginning when this school was built. The teachers state that they are fine with complying with the fire code demand by the district, last week stating that their doors cannot be propped open with door stoppers. However, they are concerned that the architects of the school failed to install windows that open in any of our newly constructed buildings. Therefore, they are concerned about this being a potential safety hazard, concern for our students, and the heat exhaustion of the students when trying to deliver quality instruction and not being able to leave the classroom doors open as a solution to the problem of our students and without medical, that have medical issues, and they're being overheated. They're passing out and throwing up. Needless to say, teachers do not have any option as an escape plan to use windows as a potential exit. #AskATeacher. Teachers are concerned that while creators of the newly designed lesson plan template thinks it's easier that, and has caused a lot of stress among teachers who have already been given a curriculum map and pacing guide to follow, as well as a scripted curriculum book that they must annotate, so why are they being asked to create lesson plans? #AskATeacher. Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Jorgensen, Danette Stokes, and Sharonda Thompson.
Good evening. Lisa Jorgensen, 743 Beasley, Memphis, Tennessee. Parent, teacher, and citizen, member of the United Education Association, the Tennessee Education Association, and the National Education Association. Per the Compensation Department, there are too many variables to provide one specific sheet on compensation. And if this is the case, how did you make the decisions on how to level? Are you saying that after our assistance with completing your survey, to tell you how long I've been working for you, you made up a plan that was impossible to see in tangible form? In the current phase of this compensation plan, y'all failed to mention that you define math and science secondary hard-to-staff teachers as teachers that are high-school math and science teachers. Your local public university, the University of Memphis, does not have an undergrad-middle school certification program that you can even recruit from. However, you still believe that this will not be a hard-to-staff role in the very near future, so you do not want to compensate teachers that are currently serving in these positions. You will be remised to believe that this will not be your next crisis in the upcoming years. #AskATeacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Danette Stokes.
Good evening. Danette Stokes, 4100 Mill Branch in Whitehaven. Teachers have submitted to the Frog Tip Line, elected Board of Directors, and President Rucker to speak on their behalf- to speak on their behalf. SCS Board Members, we petition you to walk the halls of the schools in your district and the communities of the students and parents that you serve. Because, for us, that's the walk we did for you. It was veteran teachers that petitioned the county commissioner for money with you, sacrificed our spring breaks lobbying against vouchers for the last five years, and slowing down the process or the progression of charter schools solely in our county, never demanding that you go with us. And it's obvious today that SCS has defaulted on its promissory note to veteran teachers with this new compensation plan. Teachers have no idea from year to year their salaries since SCS is a part of the over-testing of our students' game and tying teachers' salaries to those tests. Hashtag, ask a teacher.
Next is Sharonda Thompson.
Sharonda Thompson, sixty-five twenty, Stage Row, three eight one three four. Our district leaders have become like America, and our teachers are like the disenfranchised people in this nation. Last week, I listened to Al Sharpton speak, and he stated that marching never solved issues. It shined a light and brought awareness and forced legislators to solve them. It's sad that our board subscribes to this same ideology that is embedded in the fabric of the DNA of America that teachers must come to board meetings to make you aware of problems that you already know exist. It would not be wise for the board to overlook the urgency of this moment. There's a teacher shortage and low teacher morale. Teachers' legitimate concerns will not pass until there's an invigorating sense of authentic collaboration and respect. We refuse to believe there's insufficient funds in the vaults of opportunity for all teachers' salaries since we're not bankrupt when it comes to the salaries of board employees and according to the eighty-four million dollars we have in reserves. Remember the eighty-four dollars, million dollars we have in reserves. So teachers, I'm gonna speak to you now. Let's make sure we forever conduct ourselves with a high sense of dignity, respect, and discipline. Let's continue to educate, encourage, and empower our students and our parents. And when the time comes, when the time comes, if our board cannot realize that their fate is inextricably bound to ours and that neither of us can walk alone, we then must implement Phase One and reclaim our time, teachers.
The next three speakers are Rosemary Winters, Gina John, and Ken Welch.
Rosemary Winters, one twenty-six Flicker Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one four. My name is Rosemary Winters. I am the Family Engagement Chair of the United Shelby County PTA. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of President Scott for the United Shelby County Council PTA. President Scott asked me to speak today because he's attending a school PTA unit meeting, and he could not attend the board meeting. To Chairman Caldwell, Board of Commissioners, and Superintendent Hobson, I want to give you a brief report from the United Shelby County PTA. Since the last board meeting, President Scott spoke at the Shelby County Commissioners' meeting on July thirty-first and invited them to attend the council meet and greet event. On August the twenty-second, President Scott spoke at the Memphis City Council meeting and also invited them to attend the council meet and greet event. Notices have been sent out to every Shelby County school principal, inviting them and their parent leaders to attend the meet and greet. As a reminder, we personally invite each of you to attend the United Shelby County PTA meeting event this Thursday, August thirty-first, right here in the school board auditorium. You have flyers placed on your desk as well as to Dr. Ray and to Dr. Mitchell. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of United Shelby County PTA, and we look forward to seeing teachers and each of you at this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Gina John.
Hello, my name is Gina John. I'm the advocacy coordinator at Latino Memphis. My address is two seventy Arbor Common Circle at three eight one two oh. So I just wanted to read our statement about the resolution that's being proposed today and being voted on. So Latino Memphis fully supports the resolution proposed by Board Member Teresa Jones to affirm the Shelby County Board of Education's commitment to students regardless of immigration status. According to the Supreme Court decision in Plier v. Doe, every student, regardless of immigration status, has a right to education. However, as a result of the Immigration and Customs Enforcement ICE raids that occurred in Memphis last month, many immigrant families were understandably concerned to register and send their children to school. This fear and anxiety hindered the right to education for many students, which cannot be tolerated in our district. The Shelby County Board of Education's strong stance in supporting immigrants sends a message that immigrant families are welcome in the school system and in our community. Latino Memphis is committed to serving and advocating for the rights of vulnerable populations. We fully support this resolution as it seeks to build bridges within the community and encourage families that are unfairly targeted by federal agencies. We applaud the Shelby County Board of Education's explicit commitment to immigrant students and their families, and we're looking forward to collectively continuing building the next generation of Memphians. This commitment to immigrant students and their families is a commitment to all students and families that are part of the Shelby County school system. Regardless of their immigration status, all students grow together. So just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Ken Welch.
I'm Ken Welch, Post Office Box one one three eight four. Citizen of Tennessee, resident of District Two of the school board system. I speak to you today once again about your policies regarding public records. As you know, we have quite a few problems in Shelby County. Crime, economic disparity, we can go down the list. We probably all agree that one of the things we can do to best mitigate these issues is to educate our children. For seven and a half years, I've gone to school board meetings, to school board committee meetings, to transition planning commission meetings. Why? Because I understand that I need to know as much as I can learn about our school system so I can do my part as a citizen and a resident to encourage us to do our best to educate our children, to mitigate these problems, and give them opportunities in life. I think you have three major goals as a school system. You have many laws and many regulations and many requirements. One, of course, is educate the children. Two is to, at the end of the year, have balanced financials. And three is to be open and transparent to the public. You have before you some modifications to the public records policy. I've suggested to you a month ago some additional improvements I think you could make. Remember that the state law can be looked at as minimum requirements. We can do better. Everything you do as a school system is public business. It is true that the state legislature has made hundreds of exceptions to the public records and open meetings laws. And Mr. Moore can probably tell you a whole bunch of them. But we can do better. You're doing pretty good. But you know, there are many records and reports that if I wanted to know about them, I couldn't put in a public records request because I don't know what they are. I don't know they exist. So I'm suggesting let's get as much as we can out there as fast as we can without our requesting it. Think about that, and if you would, help me be a good citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public remarks. I believe Superintendent Hobson wants to address some of the comments made.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Members. Just wanna make some comments as I listen to, particularly the teacher comments. So I've been visiting schools pretty much every day since school started, and the reason I've been visiting schools, Board Members, is because I know that we have a daunting task ahead of us as we try to transition to these new standards. And I talk to teachers in every classroom, and I understand that teachers are frustrated and that they are feeling overwhelmed and they're feeling unappreciated. But then I talk to parents. Parents complain about teachers, and teachers complain about administrators, and administrators complain about central office. But the reality is, is that we're going to get some test results tomorrow and a few more a few weeks later, and they're gonna show that our students have so far to go just to get on the playing field. And if we do not work together, support our teachers, support our administrators, support our parents, then we are not going to be nearly the city that we want to be, excuse me. I do want to say that at the end of the day, Board Members, I heard a lot, and I hear the passion, and it's just hard. I mean, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. These standards are very, very hard. Teachers, teacher, excuse me, I was respectful for you guys when you talked. I'd ask you the same courtesy. Thank you. The standards require so much adult learning before we can even give the kids what they need if we expect them to learn. We have so many kids who are so far behind, so we're asking kids to be on grade level, but then expose them to the work that they need to catch up, and that is hard. There's nowhere around it. And instead of pointing fingers and swinging on each other, I think the way that we can get to where we need to be is to work together. Now, having said that, I understand there are a number of concerns. And I just want to say, Board, from this Board's perspective, I know this Board is very robust about engaging the community. I know I try to listen, and I just want to point out a couple of things that I heard that just are not accurate. We can agree, disagree on opinions, but we gotta be crystal clear on the facts. And the first thing I want to talk about, I think I heard that there was no discussion with teachers around the new compensation system. We had numerous focus groups with teachers. I think we had three meetings with Mr. Williams and MSEA. We had multiple meetings with Ms. Rucker on this compensation system. Teachers, I want to make sure we know that. We spent fourteen million dollars on teacher compensation this year, which is about eight million dollars more than we did last year. And the reason we did that was that so we could level up teachers who had less than ten years' experience. When we talked to teachers about that, there was hallelujahs that I remember because we wanted to make sure that we looked to equity because we knew there had been teachers who had worked here for years and years and years and didn't get any raise. So what we did to address that inequity was we leveled up teachers who had not gotten a raise or who were at step ten. And that was met with cheer several months ago. So I just think that we can disagree whether merit-based pay is the right way to go. I know there are different opinions on that, but the facts are that we put fourteen million dollars and had multiple engagement sessions with our teachers before we changed our teacher compensation system. Having said that, I know I met with Ms. Rucker the other day, and I told her, "Look, we are always open to continue to work on this system to get better." So when I hear, you know, we make suggestions and nobody listens, that wounds me because I know we've made a lot of different decisions and a lot of different changes in our strategies and approach because we heard directly from teachers. So to get up here and say that we don't listen and we're doing all this stuff, I just, it blows my mind. Eureka Math. We talk about Eureka Math as a standards-based curriculum. I would say to the community that when you have single-digit students proficient on these tests using the old material, then there simply is no way to get kids to learn the stuff that they need to know if you don't give them the tools and materials. And it's hard, I know it, it's a big shift. But at the end of the day, there was a football coach. His name was Denny Green, and he said, "You are," I'm sorry, Bill Parshas, "you are what your record says you are." When we get these results, it's gonna say we're a single-digit proficiency district. And I know that's not representative of the hard work that you teachers put out there every single day, but it is what it is. And so we just gotta get better. We're committed to continue to support teachers, but it's just gonna be hard. There's no magic bullet, there's no program we can go out there and buy, there's nobody that's gonna come in and save us. It's gonna have to be fixed right here at home. And I'll continue to say what I've been saying to you guys. We're gonna continue to support you as best we can, but that's not gonna make it really any easier. And I just think in closing, you know, we're gonna continue to do our absolute very best to support you guys and to create forums to be able to hear from you guys. But I just want to just make sure we clear up for the record that the notion that we just force-fed some compensation system down your throat when I talk to both of your union presidents on multiple occasions just is not accurate. But moving forward, I'm still very hopeful and still very encouraged because I know from what I see out in the schools that teachers, the educators I've run across, community members I've run across, everybody believes that all kids can learn and learn at a very high level if we give them the materials and the support they need, and it starts with us supporting teachers. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
The question is now on the approval of the minutes, and I would ask if there are any corrections and would like to try to handle the minutes of the seven twenty-five, seventeen business meeting, the eight twenty-two seventeen work session, and the eight twenty-two seventeen special call meeting all at once. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Doggett?
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell? Chairman Caldwell? You have seven aye votes.
That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to committee reports. And the first is the chair's report, and I'd like to take the first bit of time to acknowledge somebody that's worked closely with the board and believe she's been here almost ten years, and that's Mrs. Vamita Doggett, and tell her how much we appreciate the time she's given us and wish her all the success in the world for her new endeavors. So, thank you. The next comments I'm gonna make are a little more sober. So after reflecting over the weekend about some of the recent hate-filled, violent, and incendiary events around our country and milder confrontations in our county as well, I found a quote from Sir Edmund Burke in English Statesman from the seventeen hundreds that should be a reminder to us all today, almost three hundred years later. It has been profoundly said, and how true it is, "That the only thing necessary for evil to exist and triumph is for good people to remain silent." As a Shelby County school board member that represents a district where many of the people who have been targets of this recent and outrageous, despicable behavior attend our schools or work in our district. During the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, about eighty-seven of Shelby County school students, or eighty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one human beings were African-American. Twelve point three percent were Hispanic, eleven thousand eight hundred and sixteen human beings. Seven point seven were Caucasian, eight thousand six hundred and twenty human beings. And one point eight percent were of Asian descent, or one thousand nine hundred and seventeen human beings. Also, fifty-nine percent of Shelby County school students or sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight human beings were considered economically disadvantaged, while twelve and a half percent, fourteen thousand fifty-nine, human beings were students with disabilities. Also, as a citizen who lives in a diverse Shelby County where the people who have been targets of the egregious and outrageous and despicable behavior live and work, our population is fifty-two percent African-American, four hundred and ninety thousand human beings, forty-two percent Caucasian, three hundred and ninety-six thousand human beings, and six point two are Hispanic, fifty-eight thousand human beings, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. There are more than thirty-eight languages spoken, such as Spanish, Vietnamese, Arabic, which represents the ethnic and cultural diversity throughout our county. I believe that it is my responsibility, as well as that of all elected officials in the community... I believe that it is my responsibility, as well as that of all elected officials and communicators, to speak out and be clear that we do not support, but are opposed to, any person or group who would infringe on the rights of others, use violence as a means to achieve a goal, and foment discrimination and divisiveness in our community. I ask my colleagues on the Shelby County School Board to help craft a statement that expresses the feelings of our entire board to present in September for adoption. I commit to, and ask the board members as well, try to set an example for the community, our fellow, our fellow employees, but most importantly, our students and families, by working together in a spirit of mutual respect and dignity that all human beings deserve, and put the interest of the students and their families ahead of anything else as we face the difficult and important work ahead. Finally, I want to end my remarks with a timely quote from just seventy-five years ago by Martin Nemo, a prominent German Protestant pastor who is an outspoken public critic of Adolf Hitler and spent the last seven years of Nazi rule in concentration camps. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. And then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. And that concludes my comments. And I'd ask... Thank you. The next comments from the Academic Performance Committee.
Thank you, Chair and Superintendent. First, let me thank my colleagues, because we actually held two Academic Performance Committee meetings in the span of, really, was about eight days. So we have been doing a lot of work around what it looks like how we perform as a district, and more importantly, as well as board members, how we're engaging with board staff around doing this work. And the thought from those two meetings were we had coordinated school health do a presentation around their staff and exactly what they have plans for the upcoming school year. The charter school staff did a presentation of who their new staff members are, as well as, that was right before our special call meeting around approval and nonapproval of charter schools. Our second meeting also had guidance counselors, information around updating about the guidance counseling plan. The original intent of that meeting is to talk about million-dollar scholars. So we are going to do meeting number two with Dr. Richmond and Dr. Griffin around moving forward about what that looks like, and also, they're going to come back with a plan around some new PD that will be happening for guidance counselors, so all board members are aware of that. Our second meeting was about the CSE facilities discussion, and this discussion was around how the board is going to look at facilities regarding charter schools moving forward. That committee, the full committee, is meeting next week, and from there, we'll bring something back to the board.
Thank you. Next is the Audit, Budget, and Finance Committee report, and we had a meeting right before the board meeting where we started to discuss student-based budgeting and got the highlights and look forward to getting the deeper and longer report later. We also reviewed the Head Start application and looked at other documents about Head Start. Next, we have Capital Needs and Facilities Committee report. And I don't believe there's a report, Committee Outreach and Engagement Committee report.
So we didn't have a meeting this month, but I do want to make the board aware that I met with the committee from MLK fifty, and I will be bringing the resolution back next month, asking the board members to support Shelby County Schools being one hundred percent involved in the fiftieth anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King.
Next, we have the Evaluation Committee report. Internal Board Operations Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There will be a second reading on a few policies tonight, and then the IBO committee will reconvene in September.
Legislative Advocacy Committee report.
I'll be giving Board Member Woods' report. So we did have a meeting this month, and we did discuss some of the laws that were passed as it relates to charter schools. They'll be required to pay the district an authorization fee. We were very successful in having the voucher program voted down. Another takeaway was the Haslum's Administration Bill, which prohibited ASD from adding grades unless approved by the LEA. And it gave some clarity around the ASD takeover of schools, and it limited to ten years. We did see an increase for teacher salaries. We did see an increase for our ELL students, and the BP salary component was increased as well.
Thank you. And finally, we have the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly, I did want to point out to the board that I think there was some references made to two hundred and fifty teacher shortages. That's not accurate. I think we started the year with, I think, about eighty-nine vacancies, as we reported last week. Because we understand how important classroom instruction is, and every classroom needs to have a certified teacher, we have deployed our academic advisors to the classes where they have subs, so all classes are covered. I do want to note, and I alluded to earlier, the results from our high school state tests are going to come out tomorrow, and I think the headlines should probably be sobering, but not surprising. There will be some bright spots that we'll see, particularly around moving kids from the bottom tier up, and there were several schools I think that's done some remarkable work that we can all be proud of and celebrate. Finally, board, I do want to bring back to you guys our discussion around releasing student data to the charter organizations and the ASD. Pursuant to what we said, we created a form to give to parents so they understand their rights. But since then, the Nashville School Board has basically voted to challenge the law regarding the student data, and wanted to bring that back to the board for any discussion or follow-up before we, A, sent out our opt-out forms, and then ultimately before we release any student information. So just wanted to make the board aware and see if the board had any questions about that.
And I owe procurement chairman, Shanta Avant, a big I'm sorry, because I overlooked. If it makes you feel any better, it wasn't on here. But I'm sorry, it wouldn't, I apologize.
Just want to give an update that we will have a procurement meeting on this Thursday, August thirty-first, at five P.M. We'll give an update on an audit that has been done of the procurement department and also an update on the disparity study.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Superintendent, I believe, Board Member Cornell had a light on.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm taking the liberty to, first of all, when we had a finance and budget meeting, I wanted to commend Lynn Johnson for actually bringing up the fact that there are risks, things that could happen, reasons why we have to have budgets, and why we have to have some money set back for emergencies and whatnot. And so I'm going to segue from here, to talk to you, commend him, and just say that here I've handed out a piece of paper with two graphs on it, and I've handed it to the chiefs. And one graph shows the intensity of the two-hundred-year Texas flood, and the other graph shows the intensity of the two-hundred-year New Madrid earthquake. Now, the huge one is every six hundred, but we are right in the middle of the two-hundred-year mark. And so whatever you can do to make sure all the departments are, will address this and know what to do when it happens. It's just, I just thought it was really interesting. And by the way, the fact that we honored widespread panic tonight had no, is just pure coincidence.
Nice, nice try. I think I had another light on from somebody that... I'm sorry. So I would like to ask, because I have a couple of questions. I don't know how many, I looked at the letter, and obviously, they added some things beyond just the, the release of student data. And I keep hearing y'all, keep hearing y'all saying that you're starting to let parents opt out. But my question is, and maybe the legal counsel can talk about it, but they didn't even go that far. They said they were not going to release data, and I want to know if that's possible for us to either piggyback on their letter or craft a letter to the Commissioner of Education to express something along the lines that they had talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I've reviewed the letter from Nashville, and I certainly agree with the legal context in which it's submitted. I think that the small distinction is that the new statute arguably seems to deprive local school systems of their discretion. I think Nashville asserts that under FERPA, and I think they're correct, that they have discretion not to release data, and that is accurate. I think what the commissioner would say is that the intent of the statute was to deprive local districts of that discretion. I haven't had conversations with people involved in discussion, and my understanding that there's a lot of support within the state legislative branch to challenge this law, I think Nashville's challenge would be well, well set.
So I would ask if the board would allow us to put on the agenda either a resolution or some statement in support of Nashville's letter and that we indicate that we're not interested in releasing any data to the state. And so if it's, if there's an objection, then we'll get a vote. All right, but I see, I see Board Member Jones's light on first.
Just a comment. So I agree with what you just said. It's my thought, and maybe I'm wrong, that the additional step of allowing parents to have a say would basically lend credence to our position, assuming the outcome is what I think it's going to be. Ultimately, it's their children, it's their child, and it's their information, and they should have a say in it. So I don't see it as one track or the other. I see it as a dual track, that we can pursue the position that we're not going to release, but we can also hear from parents what they want to do. And ultimately, those releases would guide us in one direction or the other.
Okay, so if I understand you, a resolution...
I'm not sure if that's viable, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, but I would think if we passed a resolution that said we don't, we're not going to release any information, that, and then we could also add to the end of the resolution, we would instruct the superintendent to conduct a survey or somehow give parents the opportunity to respond, either through a school survey or something like that. Okay. All right, the illustrious chair, I mean, that's, I mean, our, our parliamentarian has pointed out that this may be a difficult thing to do. So I would ask the board if we could just pass a resolution, two resolutions, one that just says we do not want to release any student information. I think that's pretty straightforward, and that we support the actions taken by Nashville, if that's in fact what board members want to do. And so that would be my resolution to be added to the agenda. And I'm assuming that you wrote that down?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
If you, just, without objection, it will be.
Okay, without objection, it can be added, but if y'all object, I want to hear if anybody has a problem. I see Board Member Cornell's light.
I just want to make sure we're not putting our legal department in a precarious position.
You're not.
Okay.
And the second resolution could be a simple one that said we instruct the superintendent to use any means necessary to elicit from parents and families their opinions about releasing student data. Is that clear?
Yeah, that's, and it's added, is a discussion item at twelve point one, is that correct? Is that what you wanted to do?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I would suggest that the board, if the board is inclined, if Nashville does in fact file a lawsuit, we may have an opportunity to submit what they call an amicus brief, which is a friendly brief in support of their legal position, which might be very helpful, you know, to them. So I would suggest that the board might want to consider authorizing the legal department to file an amicus brief in support of Nashville. You're not a party to litigation, you're simply making legal arguments.
Okay, so I would assume we could add that to the resolution, I just, okay.
Yes.
All right, I would accept that as a friendly amendment, so. Could you kind of work with the parliamentarian so we get the wording right? And then I haven't forgot you, I think it's your turn to make a report. Let Superintendent, do you have any?
My turn now? Thank you. Chair Caldwell, members of the board. The process in which I'm about to present to the board is commonly referred to as due process. It is the first step in the process that affords certificated employees statutory rights and protections. Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine-five-five-eleven provides, among other things, that when charges are made to the Board of Education against a teacher, charging the teacher of offenses that would justify dismissal of the teacher, the charge should be made in writing, specifically stating the offenses that are charged and should be signed by the party or parties making the charge. If, in the opinion of the board, charges are of such nature as to warrant the dismissal of the teacher, the director of school shall give the teacher a written notice of this decision, together with a copy of the charges and a copy of the form, which should be provided by the Commissioner of Education, advising the teacher as to the teacher's legal duties, rights, and recourse. Additionally, Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine-five-five-twelve provides that a tenured teacher who receives notification of charges pursuant to forty-nine-five-eleven may, within thirty days after receiving the notice, demand a full and complete hearing on the charges before an impartial hearing officer. I will summarize each charge letter requested by the director of school, and after each, I will inquire as to whether there is a motion to authorize the issuance of the charge. The first matter is in the matter of Constance Smith. Ms. Smith is charged with misconduct. On March third, two thousand fifteen, Ms. Smith received a three-day suspension for testing violations and unprofessional conduct towards a member of the school staff. Ms. Smith also received a three-day suspension on February twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, for inappropriate comments towards students and a member of the school staff. Most recently, Ms. Smith was referred to the Department of Labor. Students in Ms. Smith's classroom reported several incidents of being encouraged to bring Ms. Smith food and gifts in an effort to have their grades changed. In addition, Ms. Smith reportedly used insulting and profane language towards students on multiple occasions. Following the March twenty-second incident and referral, Ms. Smith had them change their statements after they had been submitted to the principal. The other allegations are set forth from the letter, that's simply a summary. At this time, if the board is supportive of issuing the charge, a motion would be in order.
I have a motion by Board Member Avant, and a second by Board Member McCormick. Seeing no lights, I think we're ready to take a vote. Ms. Doggett?
Board Member Jones?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself. I will not vote on this particular issue, this particular employee.
Noted.
Board Member Love?
Yes.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Yes.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have six aye votes.
That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the next matter is in the matter of Jaclyn Thompson. Ms. Thompson is charged with performance issues and misconduct. The brief summary is as follows. Ms. Thompson has... Ms. Thompson has had four consecutive years of below expectation performance on observations of practice on the district-approved TIM rubric. Her observation of practice scores for those years were as follows. 2013-14, 2.152. 2014-15, 2.333. 2015-16, 2.62. And 2016-17, 2.438. Ms. Thompson has also had low student data results on the NWEA and the MAP tests. Ms. Thompson has demonstrated a pattern of unprofessional conduct in her inaction with parents and administration, in addition to failing to carry out her professional obligations with fidelity as demonstrated by the following. In April 2017, Ms. Thompson was given a written reprimand for exhibiting unprofessional behavior toward her principal and a parent and for failing to maintain her classroom. In April 2016, Ms. Thompson was given a written reprimand for unprofessionalism, including crying and screaming during a parent and administrative conference, numerous parent complaints about occurrences in her classroom, and for failing to provide a proper learning environment for students. In January 2015, Ms. Thompson was given a written reprimand for a number of issues, including not adhering to school-wide procedures and expectations during instruction and for unprofessionalism. A parent complained that Ms. Thompson had snatched her son's hands from his ears while Ms. Thompson was speaking to the parent about the child. In 2015 December, Ms. Thompson was given an oral reprimand for failing to complete a number of administrative responsibilities within a required timeframe, and for failing to show up for a scheduled meeting with the principal concerning an observation. Ms. Thompson has been provided ongoing professional support and professional development, including participating in the peer assistance and review program. In June 2016, Ms. Thompson was advised that she would be subject to dismissal if her performance did not improve. If you believe that the issuance of the charge is in order, then a motion is required.
I have a motion by Board Member McCormick. Second. Seeing no lights, we're ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Yes.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have seven aye votes.
That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the final matter is in the matter of Sandra Smith as a performance charge. For three consecutive years, Ms. Smith has had total TIM scores of two below expectations, including 2013-14, 2014-15, and 2015-16. Ms. Smith's observation of practice scores for 2013-14, 2015-16, and 2016-17 were below expectations. Her observation of practice scores for those years were as follows. 2013-14, 2.429. 2015-16, 2.393. And 2016-17, 2.695. Prior efforts to remediate Ms. Smith has proven unsuccessful. For example, Ms. Smith has been provided ongoing professional support and professional development, including participation in the peer assistance and review program. In June 2016, Ms. Smith was advised that she would be subject to dismissal if her performance did not improve. If you believe that the issuance of the charge is in order, then a motion to approve the charge is required.
I have a motion from Board Member McCormick. I'll second. Seeing no lights, we're ready to vote.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have seven aye votes.
I have the brother.
That motion passes. So we have two items in front of us. The question is, unfinished business is now on the approval of policies.
Mr. Chairman, I had my light on for the report.
For which report? Oh. Attorney Moore, Mr. Cornell has a question.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Did you turn your light on before the vote?
I got my light on.
Before the vote?
Yeah. Oh, I turned my light on as soon as the vote was over because I did not want to bring something up during the vote.
But, so there's nothing on the floor right now? You know, I'm sorry, but I can't bend the rules. We have to have some rules of order. If you have something that's dire, I would suggest you try to go-
It's in regard to the procedure we just did, so the public would understand exactly what happened.
Let me just say this, Mr. Chairman, sort of we're clear. This is the first of the process of due process. Based on these issuance of charges, the employee will then have a right to request a hearing within 30 days, and they'll have a full due process hearing before a neutral administrative judge. Once that decision is made, depending on how it goes, if it's adverse to the employee, the employee then has a right to appeal to the Board, and the Board will look at it again based on a complete record, which includes the evidence that's presented.
Thank you. And Board Member Cornell, I would just like to tell you that, so discussion comes before the vote, and I don't want to suppress anybody's ability to have their comments heard, but there are Robert Rules of Order, and if we don't follow that, and people pick and choose what they follow, it will be a very long disruptive meeting. So I would just encourage you in the future, if you have comments you want to make, make them before a vote.
Mr. Chairman, the only reason I didn't want to talk before the vote is I didn't want to, in any way, prejudice the action.
That does not change the rules of our meetings. So with that, we'll move on to the unfinished business, and the question is now on approval of policies. And so we have two policies for second reading. Policy 1012, Public Records, and Policy 5023, Family Life Education. Okay, so seeing no lights, I mean, first we'll need a motion, and second. So moved by Board Member Avant, and second by Board Member McCormick. If anybody has any lights. Board Member Love?
Superintendent, on the family life education policy, I know that you are, let me go back to it. So you're charged with creating the curriculum? Or you're charged with making sure your administration creates the curriculum?
Yeah.
Okay, so all I would ask with this curriculum is to make sure that we are documenting areas or zip codes that have high number of youth STDs, and how many of our children are actually participating or opting in to this family life curriculum?
So I would only say that, Ms. Love, that I don't know if there's a way for us to capture, you know, which kids, you know, have been infected. I ask-
So not infected, there are zip codes where there are high numbers of youth who have STDs. So based on the zip code, and the schools in that zip code, what percentage of children or parents are opting in to have their children participate in this curriculum?
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought you meant inside schools. You just mean the zip codes where the schools are. Can we, Ms., can we make sure we?
But we could try to develop a way to capture that. We want to keep the parents' identity, I think, clear, but we could actually capture, with principals reporting to us, how many students opted out of the family life curriculum by zip code. Now, some schools serve more than one zip code, so it's, and some are charter.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not asking for parents' identity. All I'm saying is if there is a zip code where there's a high number of STDs, I would like to know the schools inside of that zip code. Is the opt-out high? Is it 80%? Is the opt-out low? Is it 20%? So I can gauge to see if our children are receiving the information to make sure that they remain safe.
Okay, we can collect that data for you this year.
We can do that, Ms. Love.
Board Member Avant?
I think I was just going to add to, Ms. Love, I think there are more students that opt in than there is opt out, so it's probably easier for you to give us the number of students that have opted out, because the majority of our students. Okay, thank you.
Just a question, have we added those two resolutions? Because I've gone out of the agenda and back on, and they're not on there. Well, I know the one about the landfill, her resolution's on there, but the other two we talked about with Nashville?
No, sir, I have not added those. I'll add the language. I think you had mentioned it. Was Attorney Moore going to give us specific language for that, or?
Okay, yes, I think he was going to add some, I didn't, okay, we'll get him to give it to you. So with that, next is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing no lights, we're ready to vote on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, can I just, on the, I think it's 11.8, the, no, it's the donation of land to Kansas, to the county. You know, there is just a legal issue that we just need to make a tweak to that, so we can remove that, I can announce it, and just vote on it separate. An issue came up today regarding that.
Yeah, I think, he can't remove it, but I'll for you, I'll remove it. All right, and we'll put it on for a vote. So any other items to be removed? So we're ready to vote on the-
Chairman Caldwell, I believe we were at the policies.
Yeah, policies, I'm sorry. Go ahead, and we're ready to vote on the adoption of policies.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Yes.
Board Member Woods? Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight aye votes.
That motion passes, the policies are approved. So now we go to the consent agenda, and so we have one item pulled off the consent agenda, and that is the real estate donation 11-6 to be spoken about and voted on. So minus 11-6, the question is now on approval of the consent agenda. Seeing no lights, we're ready to vote.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight aye votes.
The consent agenda passes, now we move down to requests for action, and the first one is the resolution opposing the, I'm sorry, so we approved the resolution, and the consent agenda, of your Board Member Jones. That was in the consent agenda. Okay, so the, no, it comes off the consent agenda, and then it becomes an item, an action item that we discussed. Yeah, so we'll be able to go to it. Okay, so the next item is 12-1, the resolution opposing the landfill expansion near Whitney Achievement Elementary School District.
Thank you, Chair. Board members, you all-
Wait, I think we need a motion, I believe. I'll make a motion that, all right. Now we're ready for discussion.
Thank you.
You didn't put your light on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm kidding, go ahead.
Board members, you all should have received a resolution opposing the expansion of a landfill near Whitney Achievement Elementary School, and I'll just give you a brief background. Memphis Wrecking Company, they are in the process now of asking, requesting the Land Use Control Board to expand their landfill. There is a landfill close to Whitney Elementary, but when that landfill was created, it was a pit, so they were able to dump debris underground. If they expand this landfill, they have no choice but to go up, so you will have trash and debris very close to Whitney Elementary School, and it is, in my opinion, that there does not need to be a landfill or a landfill expansion there. So I'll read the resolution, and it's a resolution opposing the expansion of the landfill near Whitney Achievement Elementary School. Whereas the Shelby County Board of Education supports and advocates for all Shelby County students to learn in a safe nurturing school environment, and whereas Memphis Wrecking Company has vowed to expand the landfill next to Whitney Achievement Elementary School, and whereas Memphis Wrecking Company withdrew its landfill expansion application in 2015 and 2016 amid community concerns and outcry, and whereas the Shelby County Board of Education opposes the landfill expansion as it would move the landfill operations to within 300 yards of the elementary school, as well as affect the use of the public park behind the school. And whereas, in addition to the proximity of the landfill to the school, the Shelby County Board of Education is concerned that the amount of dust and noise from the equipment will increase as the landfill is moved closer to the school, thereby potentially disrupting the learning environments for students. And whereas, the Fraser community has undertaken a number of initiatives and projects aimed to revitalize the area and eliminate blight and the landfill expansion would hamper those efforts, as well as creating ASOR in the community. Now therefore be resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education voices its opposition to the Memphis Wrecking Company's landfill expansion and application. Be it further resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education directs the superintendent to forward a copy of this resolution to the Memphis and Shelby County Land Use Control Board, Memphis City Council, and Memphis County Commission, submitted this 29th day of August 2017, by me.
I see a light, Ms. Bibbs?
No, I'm just want to tell Board Member Love, thank you for her leadership on this, and full support of this, and I just hate to see that they thought it was okay to bring it back.
Next, I have Board Member Cornell.
Yes, I went out there and drove around last year. It's a nice community, they've got some woods nearby. It's a nice school, and I think this expansion would be ridiculous.
Next, Board Member Jones.
Board Member Love, I want to thank you, I support your resolution also. I know this has been ongoing, I know there's been a considerable amount of pushback from the community, and it is sad that it was brought back again. So I support your resolution.
Board Member Avant?
Board Member Love, thank you again for your leadership on this. Appreciate you taking a stand and also always representing your community so well. I know that there has been a lot of feedback from parents, community members, and other business owners who have opposition to this expanding, so thank you so much for this resolution, and I do stand in full support.
Board Member Orgel?
So when does it go to Land Use Control Board?
I believe September the 12th. I know there is a community meeting tonight. The date might not be correct, but I think it's September the 12th. It was brought to our attention, this, it was brought to our attention this month, that it would be on the agenda.
So when something goes to Land Use Control Board, usually there's a notice filed. So, when something goes to Land Use Control Board, usually there's a notice filed sent to the adjacent landowners, or people within five hundred feet, because in the city of Memphis, did staff get a notice on that, is that how we were aware of this?
We did, we did.
The, is it, and I apologize if I didn't see it, is it on the computer? Is the notice on the computer that show? No, 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 that's not meant, is it, is it supporting material for this? Could y'all put it up there real quick, or is that possible?
So if I can give you a little clarity, when it came up, I believe in 2015, 2016, Shelby County Schools, they did write a letter in opposition, this resolution is what I
You can go on somebody else, that's fine, I just wanted to look at it.
So, as to give you some more time, I'll make a comment, I agree with the board sentiment and the resolution from Board Member Love, and I'm in favor of that as well.
Can you, can you show me where the school is, I would like to have this? If you have to vote, I'll just pass.
Do, I'll ask if other board members object, do you want to go do a vote, or you want to give him more time to-
Does the school notice?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, will of the board, okay. Without objection, we'll wait a couple of minutes.
You know what, go ahead, go ahead, I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna look, I would have liked it right there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Ms. Michelle, can you show him on here, what he wants?
No, I'm fine, just go ahead.
We can do an addees, that's from the parliamentary.
Is that the school right there? That looks like a school. I'll bring it back.
Looks like we're ready for a vote now, Ms. Doggett.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgul?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell? You have eight aye votes.
That motion passes. Next, I guess we'll move to twelve two, which is, I can put all these in one.
You can.
Okay, so the resolution is, I've crafted it, and I'll try to say it slowly, so y'all are aware of what you're voting on, whereas the Tennessee Commissioner of Education, Candace McQueen, has directed Superintendent Dorsey Hopson to release Shelby County Schools' student information to the ASD and charter schools, therefore be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education will resist the release of student information, and therefore be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Edu, I mean Shelby County Board of Education supports the Nashville School District, or Metro Nashville Schools District, in its resistance to the release of student information, therefore be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education authorizes counsel to file an amicus brief in support of the Nashville school system, should it file a lawsuit. All right, yeah, I'll second it, or, Board Member Love has seconded, and I don't see any lights, Superintendent Hopson?
I just want to be clear, the board, so, we still intend to, I guess we see this as a both and, to take the position with the state, but then also to go about educating our parents, letting them know this request has been made, and then notwithstanding what happens, ultimately it's up to them, if they don't want to turn it over, I mean, so I think it's just, in case there's a lawsuit, and the court comes back, and they say, no, you gotta do it, if the parents say they don't want to release it, then we don't have, then we don't have to release it, so, that would be the approach I recommend, but I'll defer to board.
Board Member Ray Van?
So Superintendent, your recommendation is that we can move forward with the resolution, however, we also want to put a clause in there that parents, I'm sorry.
I think, Ms. Ray Van, that what I'm hearing from the board is that the board is resisting, and if Nashville files a lawsuit, the board will present an amicus brief in support of those arguments, in the meantime, while it's going on, we're not going to release any information.
All right, we're just gonna go about educating our parents, that this is the stance that the board has made-
Exactly.
-as far as the release of the information-
Exactly.
-at this point, okay.
And I believe that's what Board Member Jones had requested, Board Member Jones?
Right, it was my thought that if the parent, under, under FERPA and the state law, if the parent did not want it released, then they could indicate so, and it wouldn't be, so for me, my thought was that it would just be supporting our initial decision if the parents have weighed in on it too, and they have that right. But they're separate, they're two separate actions, the, that's separate, the parent involvement in education is separate from the resolution tonight.
Board Member Ray Van?
Mr. Chair, I just would also ask that we work very closely with community engagement to make sure that, especially for those communities where this is particular issue, and I know it is in my district, that we send communication out to all of our PTOs, to our principals, administrators, and that they are also sending out something to parents to educate them, because this is a, this is something that comes up pretty regularly in community meetings, in Whitehaven, I know for sure, because of where some of the ASD schools are located or interested in recruiting children, and parents have been very vocal about the release of that information, so I'm hopeful that as a result of this resolution being passed by the board, that we also get some communication directly out to schools, administrators, and parents.
Absolutely.
I agree with you a hundred percent, the other thing I might put a bug in everybody's ear, if you go, when we go to the PTA meet and greet, that we tell every PTA president or whoever, PTA member shows up, so, I see no more lights, Ms. Doggett, we are ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Orgul?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight aye votes.
That motion passes. Next, we're, now we're down to the final item of business, and that's the item that was pulled off of the consent agenda, and, it was formerly eleven six, it is recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approves the donation of former Kansas Career and Technical Center located at eighty West Olive Street to the Shelby County Government, and I believe the legal counsel had a-
Yes, the only thing I'm gonna recommend that the board do here is add language to the recommendation that says, and authorizes the superintendent to consummate the transaction in his discretion, and the reason is, we're just working on some language with the county on the transfer of property, that's kind of holding the process up, so we don't want to, you know, go through and make this commitment, and that fall through on the other side, it really goes to whether or not, you know, the land that we're receiving will be in acceptable condition without restrictions, right now there are some restrictions on the land that we believe we can work through, but we just want to make sure that, before everybody signs off on the deal, that it's a go.
All right, so what I would ask you to do is briefly state that language, and then if I don't have any objections, we'll add it, and then we can go to discussion.
So I will just read the amended recommendation, which will include that language, it is recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education approves the donation of former Kansas Career and Technical Center located at eighty West Olive Street to Shelby County Government, and authorizes the superintendent to consummate the transaction in his discretion.
All right, now, Board Members, your lights, well, no, we need a motion in a, in a second.
I'm making a motion.
All right, I have a motion from Board Member Orgul, and a second by both, Board Member McCormick, and, all right. Is, is there any objection to the addition of the language from the original item on the agenda?
There being no objection, it's added.
It's yours objection?
No, of course not.
Okay, okay, all right, well, so, seeing though, we'll add that language, and now we have discussion, we have a motion and a second, and so I recognize, I think Board Member Orgul's was on there first, and then Ms. Jones?
Unless you want to go, you sure? The, go run through the restrictions on the land use, and are they deed restrictions?
Yeah, well, the way I understand it, it is restrictions that were not ever recorded in the deed itself, but there are contractual restrictions, and one of the contractual restrictions, I understand, is a, some type of limitation that the land that we will receive can only be used for recreational facilities without the consent of the prior owners, and I think there's another issue dealing with removal of dirt, I think our expectation is all those will go away, but we just want to make sure they go away before we sign off on it, you know, the donation.
So it, the recreational, a school could have recreational uses, but it doesn't say for school purposes?
Yeah, that's correct.
As the, are the, is the former owner, how back, who's the next person on the chain of title? How far back does that go?
Remember, remember, I found out about this about an hour before the board meeting.
You should have all the answers.
So, so, so that's why, that's why-
Oh, you don't work by the hour anymore?
No, I don't work by the hour anymore, you know, had I did, I would have found out about it two weeks ago, no, but, I, I, I-
And you'd still be talking about it.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
So the issue is, I think, you know, we don't believe it's a major impediment, I think it's gonna, it's gonna go away, but we just don't, we want to be clear that the deal on our side will not close until we're satisfied that, you know, those restrictions are reasonably resolved, so, that's all.
The, but what may have to happen is slow it down, because we might have to go find the heirs, and see if that's okay for a school.
My, my, my impression was the county knew who to deal with, that nobody probably, you know, knew that there was an unrecorded restriction, which as you know, may not be a restriction at all, if it's not recorded, but, you know, I think they just want to work it out, and we have every expectation this will resolve itself, this will stop it from needing to come back to the board-
I agree with that.
... delay the process another thirty days.
And it helps the county out, too.
Absolutely.
Gotcha, okay, that's good, I agree with what you process is.
Board Member Jones?
So, I, I like the idea of it not coming back to the board, so we can go ahead and move this forward, I know this is something that I, as a board member, wanted to see happen, I commend you, because we do want to have a piece of property that we're able to use as we see fit without restrictions, but in, in the case that it's not worked out, I, I would want something back, or it back on the agenda, to inform us why and how that didn't happen, and that was my only, if it doesn't work out, and you're not able to, then I guess it could be part of your report.
So what I, what we suggest, Board Member Jones, is if we get it done before the next meeting, we'll just let the board know, if not, we'll just put it back on the agenda.
Seeing, Board Member Cornell?
What, what is our parliamentary situation on this resolution right now? Okay, I'm asking for a point of information, where are we?
No, I wasn't, I was trying to figure out, while we are, we are discussing what was formerly item eleven six, that says it's recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education approves the donation of the former Kansas Career and Technical Center located at eighty West Olive Branch Street to Shelby County Schools, and I'll let the legal counsel repeat it one more time.
And authorize the superintendent to consummate the transaction in his discretion.
And this was land we were swapping with them, so this is, okay, yeah, okay, I'm just trying to find out for you, because I know it's, you know, and I find out for myself, too, really, all right, seeing no more lights, I think we're ready to vote.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Orgul?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chairman Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight aye votes.
That motion passes, seeing no more business before the board, we are adjourned.